Get started. This is the City of Palm Coast City Council's special budget workshop. Today is Tuesday, July the 26th, 2022. It is 9:00 a.m., and we are in the community wing of City Hall. So with that, would you all please rise and join me for our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Mayor Alvin.
Present.
Councilmember Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Finelli.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
And Vice Mayor Brancino is excused as discussed at the July 19 meeting.
Thank you. We move on to the public participation agenda item. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact info. And I apologize, we have a small audience this morning, but I think I'll go through the information for those that may be viewing the meeting virtually. The comment cards can be found on the table near the agendas or from the table in the back where our directors are seated. Public participation shall be held in accordance with Section 286.0114 Florida statutes. And pursuant to the city council's meeting policies and procedures, each speaker shall at the podium provide their name and may speak for up to three minutes. The public may provide comments to the city council relative to matters not on the agenda at the times indicated in this agenda. Following any comments from the public, there may be discussion by the city council. When addressing the city council on specific enumerated agenda items, speakers shall direct all comments to the mayor, make their comments concise and to the point, not speak more than once on the same subject, not by speech or otherwise, delay or interrupt the proceedings or the peace of the city council, obey the orders of the mayor or the city council, and not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments while addressing the city council, which pursuant to council rules shall be considered disorderly. Any person who becomes disorderly or who fails to confine his or her comments to the identified subject or business shall be cautioned by the mayor and thereafter must conclude his or her remarks on the subject within the remaining designated time limit. Any speaker failing to comply as cautioned shall be barred from making any additional comments during the meeting and may be removed as necessary for the remainder of the meeting. Members of the public may make comments during the public comment portion of the meeting. Please be advised that public comment will only be permitted during the public comment portions of the agenda at the times indicated by the chair during the meeting. So with that, I would open up the meeting to public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to address city council members at this time? Seeing no one approach, I will close public comment at this time. And we can move forward to, let's see. Next item would be just instructions on today's meeting. The council meets in workshops to be well informed of each item to be brought before the city council and to make the best determination on behalf of all residents. City staff presents detailed information during the workshops and provides a summary background for each item, as well as any additional documents relative to the item. The city council can then have a meaningful collaborative healthy discussion on each item presented. This way, facts and knowledge can be obtained prior to the next business meeting, where city council then makes the best determination in the interest of the citizens' health, safety, and welfare on each item. As we continue to grow as a collaborative council and follow all council meeting policies and procedures, I will always try to do my best to make sure that every city council member has an opportunity to bring forth individual opinions. Our constituents are expecting council to communicate cohesively and with civility to serve our community. The workshops are a valuable tool to present and discuss our individual opinions on behalf of all residents and achieve these objectives. We may not agree with each other, but that is one advantage of the workshops, to evaluate all the information necessary in advance of a decision, a motion, and a vote at our next business meeting. I hope that we will all understand the purpose of these workshops, and I invite all opinions at all times. And with that, I would invite our first presentation this morning, which would be a presentation regarding proprietary funds budget. You have the floor.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Gwen Ragsdale, your Budget Procurement Manager. Staff is here to present to you the enterprise fund budgets to include water and wastewater utility, stormwater, building, and information technology funds. So between January and June, we covered several items from the citizen survey to the adoptions of SAP priorities, departmental operation overviews, as well as budget presentations. As you can see, during the months of July and August, you will have several detailed budget presentations for all operational and capital budgets in preparation for the September public hearings to adopt the 2023 fiscal year budget. Today, we'll have the overview for today, the wastewater and wastewater operating fund summary, as well as the five-year capital projects plan. Stormwater will present the operating fund summary and the five-year capital plan. Building will present the operation fund, and information technology will present the enterprise fund summary. This is an overview of the FTEs for the utility fund. Currently, water and wastewater have 153 FTE positions and are requesting seven new positions for a total of 160 FTEs for fiscal year 23. Stormwater currently has 53 FTEs and is requesting six new positions for a total of 59 FTEs for fiscal year 23. The building department currently has 24.63 FTEs and is requesting one new FTE for a total of 25.63. Information technology has one FTE and is now requesting an additional position for fiscal and is not requesting any additional positions. The next slides will give you more detail in what those positions are. So Water and Wastewater Fund are requesting two utility system technicians for water collection and one for water distribution and one for water plant number two. They are also requesting a utility systems foreman, a wastewater treatment reclaim coordinator, and a construction site inspector. Stormwater is requesting a survey crew chief and a resiliency compliance manager for stormwater engineering, a stormwater asset supervisor for stormwater operations, an assistant stormwater maintenance manager, two equipment operator twos for stormwater maintenance, as well as new part-time temporary labor. The building fund is also requesting a new building inspector. We will review detailed expenditure budgets in the next few slides. Council received the detailed worksheets last week, and they were added to the city's website for the public. So I will now turn it over to Director Steve Flanagan, who will present the water and wastewater budgets.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
We're going to start with a summary of revenue and expenses here. Obviously, most know that infrastructure is an expensive business to be in, and it's getting more expensive all the time. But our revenues and basically operating account for over $50 million now. Administrative services are about $4.5 million. Wastewater operations are $12.5 million. Water operations, $18.1 million. And non-departmental, $22.4 million. So we go into some detail on the individual divisions within the utility administration. What's noted here would be that through our succession planning operation that's citywide and specific to utility, we filled the deputy utility director position recently. So that's reflected here in the admin budget. Customer service, there's no changes of magnitude in this budget at all. Utility finance, somewhat similar to customer service. No material changes in the budget. Our construction management and engineering folks, this is highly tied to growth and growth management. We have a new position for a construction site inspector here, and so that's the majority of the cost increases here in the CMNE division of the utility. Non-departmental, we have proposed a 23 budget of $2.6 million for operating expenditures, $12 million for debt service, $7.6 for inter-fund transfers for a total of roughly $22.4 million. This incorporates the renewal and replacement transfers from the operating budget as well as pilot, which is the transfer for taxes in lieu of taxes for the utility. Wastewater pumping, here we have a proposed budget of $900,000 for personnel services, $1.1 million for operating, and $75,000 for inter-fund transfers. The main increases here are for material cost escalation, and we added many generators within the past year or so. So there are some additional costs here for maintaining those generators so that they're there and ready when needed. Wastewater collection, personnel services, $2.1 million. Operating expenditures, $2.4 million. Capital outlay, about $150,000, and inter-fund transfers of a little over $800,000. This is a division that is a, demands a high level of maintenance. This is basically tied to our PEP system, which is a high maintenance entity in and of itself. So we did request two additional technicians for this division. Wastewater treatment plant number one, personnel services, just under $1 million. Operating expenditures, just under $2 million. For a total, just under $3 million. No magnitudal changes here, I would say, other than some of the operating expenditures are going up because this is our oldest wastewater plant, and it is aging now. So capital outlay for some of the equipment replacement is starting to show up here, a little more than it has in years gone by. Wastewater treatment plant number two, personnel services, a little over half a million. Operating expenditures, a little under $1.3 million, and an inter-fund transfer of a little over $50,000. Here we have a new wastewater treatment reclaim coordinator proposed for the budget. At present, we only have one person that deals with our entire reclaim system and industrial waste. So he goes around and checks all the grease interceptors in the community as well. So we're proposing a second person here. Water treatment plant number one, personnel services, $950,000. Operating expenditures, $2.6 million for a total of $3.5 million. Not a lot of change here at plant one. Little bit of change when it comes down to chemical costs. So most of the additional operating is in chemical here. Water treatment plant number two, personnel services, $800,000. Operating expenditures, $2 million for a total of $2.8. Similar to plant one here, most of this increase is in chemical. This plant uses much more chemical than plant number one does. So it shows up a little bit more here. And it is also a higher maintenance plant than plant one. So we are asking for an additional operator here as growth and demand for additional water treatment comes on. Water plant number three, personnel services, a little over 3/4 of a million. Operating expenditures, a little over $1 million for a total of $1.8. This one is the least demanding currently for funding based on chemical. Uses a little less chemical than the other two facilities. So therefore, you see much less increase in the budget here at plant three. Water quality, we basically kept this one pat, so to speak. So we're basically on task for this past year's budget at $870,000 for personnel services and a little over $239,000 for operating for a total of $1.1 million. Water distribution, this is one of the bigger divisions. Proposed 2023, personnel services, almost $3 million. Operating expenditures, $2.2 million. Capital outlay of $3.5 million. Most of all, that capital outlay is growth and inter-fund transfers of a little over $70,000 for just under $8.8 million. A lot here is the two additional personnel. We have one technician that would be mostly tied to our backflow prevention maintenance, which is a regulatory item. And then we are wanting to add a foreman in our meter reading area so that the field personnel have someone they can rely on to answer their questions when they have them. In addition here, cost escalation had hit this budget, this department, this division's budget greatly. Also, we struggle a lot of times in this division right here, four pieces and parts and just finding them, no matter what we pay for them. But we have, this division has worked hard to keep the operation running well. Then we move into the capital and the capital summary. Fiscal '23, revenues, impact fees, roughly a little over $13 million expected. Transfers from renewals and replacements would be $6.5 million. Grants, which are great, $7.8 million. Those are some of the American Rescue Plan funds that we got direct to the city, as well as funds that the county is providing to the city to expand some of the beach side improvements. And appropriated fund balance of $20 million for a total of $67-plus million. Operating portion of that miscellaneous utility services, a little over $1.8 million. $18.5 million for water improvements and $47-plus million for wastewater improvements. Most of this budget, or I shouldn't say most of it, but a good percentage of this budget ties to our expansion at wastewater treatment plant number two, which is underway now, as well as the rescue funds and the projects tied to the rescue funds. The water capital projects expenditures, we have highlights on that would be improved lime sludge handling operation at water plant one, add an additional thickener tank at water plant number two, replace the fuel storage tanks at water plants one and two, add a new $2 million ground storage tank at water plant three, and begin the process at water plant three of improving the well field and studying the plant, the next plant expansion and design. It also includes payments for the water main relocation that has been going on for quite some time on the beach side at Marineland Acres. And it includes the county funds for installing a new water main at the Willowood subdivision on the beach side. And the majority of these funds are tied to growth-related items. Wastewater capital, capital highlights here are, provides a new residential PEP tank assembly installations for new construction. Updates at the wastewater treatment plant number one to several of the separate treatment functions. The wastewater two plant, number two, expansion from $2 million gallons a day to $4 million gallons a day, which is funded by a state revolving fund loan. Three force extensions totaling roughly $4 million, mostly funded by the Flagler County grants. A reclaim water main extension to the Indian Trail Sports Complex. Conversion of two old eductor-style pump stations in the pumping system to submersible-style pump stations. And I'm here for any questions you might have.
Excuse me, a couple of informational questions for me. Unless somebody needs to go first. Okay. In the earlier slides, and it may have preceded your presentation, there are requests for additional staff members that look like they would require a variety of certifications in order to perform the functions that were listed. So one, I need you to tell me if that's true. And number two is, are personnel like that available in the marketplace? That's, my concern is that we are budgeting for people that, I'm not suggesting that we don't need, but are they in fact available? Because these are not freshman workers that are coming in for first-time training. It doesn't sound like these are, maybe this is part of your succession plan as well. I'm just not sure. Can you comment on that for me?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so the first two on the slide here are wastewater-related. So these technicians would most likely not be certified or licensed when they come in. I mean, it's great if we can find one, but we rarely can find one that's already certified. So what we're working with is people that may have had construction-type experience is what we'd kind of tend to look for. And then it's not a bad thing to train them ourselves because they're then trained to how we do things, not to how they did things somewhere else. Things have actually gotten a little better as far as turnover in the last couple of months in finding people that have a skill set that we can utilize because prior to, two, three months ago, we weren't getting very good applications for some of these positions. Now, the water distribution person here, they sometimes do come in already licensed, but normally not. In the same way, we train them ourselves, train them in-house. Then our biggest problem in the past here, a year or so, has been holding on to them after we spend the money to train them. We want to hold on to them because obviously it's not a wise decision to spend a whole lot of money training people and then they walk away. So hopefully, we can do that more as time moves on. We also have, the next one down is a foreman position for water distribution. That's really tied to our meter reading. We want to have a foreman that's out in the field and basically a working foreman. Right now, the personnel, some of them are fairly new, and so they need that guidance from a foreman out in the field as well. And we have a person already in-house that we think will probably fill that position.
Good.
Move up. In the wastewater side, I spoke a little bit about that earlier. We only have one person right now that does reclaim coordination and industrial waste inspections as well. And actually, this year, while we were very shorthanded at wastewater treatment plant number two, thankfully, he's a very experienced young man, so to speak, and he actually holds a operator license. So he actually even filled in as a plant operator for us at one time when we were in dire needs for operators. Next one down is water plant number two. And out of the water plants, that's the one that demands the most maintenance. So we're looking at trying to add an operator position there as, especially as our flows increase due to our growth. More and more, it takes more and more time. Things, things happen faster. You have to clean things more often, those kinds of things. So we're looking at trying to add a person down there. And then the last one is actually for our capital divisions folks under stormwater and engineering, an inspector for our capital because our capital is, there's a lot in there, especially this year, to try and move forward. So having good inspection pays off down the road greatly.
Okay. Steve, thank you for that. During your budget preparation, when you were doing the arithmetic, have you phased in these positions according to a timeline? Have you layered them in on a 12-month expense basis? What was your, is it, or, or is it by individual position?
Several of them, I think the majority of them actually we have listed for adding to the budget in April, so midway through the year.
Okay.
And in addition to that, I, if I didn't bring it up, I should bring it up, that much of this is going into the equation for our rate study, which is underway.
Good.
And we'll see what the results of that is. Hopefully, it'll look good for what growth is and what our operating budget is.
Thank you for that segue. I just have two other quick comments. One, the chemicals that you referred to several times during the presentation, are we purchasing many or any of those according to a contractual agreement with a manufacturer or supplier so that we can better predict the cost increases?
We have contracts for all of those when it comes down to it. The bad news there is that in the past, we could get the vendors to hold the price for quite some time. They're getting now to where, I think, one of our most recent bids that went out for chemical, the longest period of time they would hold the cost was six months.
So the best contract we can make is for a six-month period? Okay.
In that one chemical case.
Okay.
Now, what we're hoping with the changes of the interest rates and stuff like that is the demand will lessen, and that'll actually help us down the long road because much of the chemicals have increased by 30 and 40% already.
Sure.
So we're hoping that things change and they stable out a little bit.
And, excuse me.
Similar to the gas, you might say.
The last, the last comment I have is you referred to one of the treatment plants as being the neediest of the bunch. Are the improvements that you presented for renovation because of repair and aging or additions because of growth? Or is it a balance?
That, that plant is plant number two, which is down in the south end of town. And basically, that plant is two plants in one because it's a nanofiltration plant. And then in addition, I won't even try and guess how many years ago it's been now. I think it was roughly 2015, that we added a lime softening component to that plant. So basically, that plant is now two plants in one. The nanofiltration plant produces a concentrate flow. And in 2015, we took that concentrator, what some professionals would say reject water, and we now treat that reject water by a lime softening process. So almost every gallon that comes into that plant goes out into our system treated. So almost every gallon that comes into that plant goes out into our system treated. But based on that, it's a much more maintenance.
Okay. So, and let me just finish up here. City council can assume, based on your presentation today, that this presentation keeps us in pace with the current growth and the projected growth that you are aware of?
We, we are doing everything we can to keep up with the growth at, at the rate that it is now moving. Part of the rate study will definitely take into consideration that growth pattern because we have in there, if, if the growth pattern stays the way it is, or roughly the way it is, even though most assume it will slow down based on current economy, that we will have the money in the plan to implement the growth-needed items.
So we're keeping it working and we're growing it according to your best expectations?
Yes, sir.
Very good, okay. Sorry, gentlemen, questions?
I, I just did have one. Can we go back to how many new hires you're asking again? A total of how many?
Seven.
Just, just seven, but some may be promotions within?
Yes, but they would still create a new position.
They'd create a new position.
Right, that, in our succession plan, if there's somebody capable of doing that job, they could then be elevated, but then their position would be.
Having been out to your plants, I mean, I know how complex they are. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman?
No.
Councilman? Thank you very much for the presentation, very well done.
Appreciate it.
City manager, I didn't, I didn't ask for your input. I know how proud you are of these folks that do the work that we rarely see and only complain about when it's a problem and take for granted every day of the week. This is your chance to give kudos to your staff.
Well, I've come to the biggest understanding I've ever had of utilities in my career here at the city of Palm Coast, and I appreciate your comment, Councilmember Danko, of going behind the scenes and seeing the tremendous effort that's taken upon our team in utilities every day. And a lot of the pride, too, of how safe and efficient operations are. So I appreciate the opportunity just to reflect on the expertise in our utility department.
Very good. Okay, our next presentation is going to be Stormwater Management Fund by Director Coet.
Yes, good morning. I'll, I'll run through our budget regarding stormwater. And you can see here up on the screen are the revenue sources. It's a fairly flat fund for charges. We did have our rate increase that will continue, expires here soon, so we do have a rate study underway as well in this fund. We did initiate a couple other revenue sources, you know, tied to permitting, that, that's what other revenue is. We do have some loans in here. SRF loan was a one-time project that came in in '22. And then, bank load proceeds, you can see, we, we got the loan this current year. Most of that construction is actually going to happen next year, so you'll see as we go through the budgets, the increase in next year's budgets really tied to some of those loan projects. And then you can see down below the, the various funds themselves for expenditures, stormwater operations, maintenance, engineering, and non-departmental. And we'll go through each one of those specifically here on these upcoming slides. So the stormwater management engineering fund, we have personnel services, which is increasing. We have a new survey crew chief. That is a position where we currently have four surveyors, two two-man crews, and we, we struggle with one when we're short of position. So if someone's sick on vacation, and we also work with our maintenance crews for training and supervision. Our maintenance staff, you know, is more a high turnover type of position. Training all those staff members up on the swell rehab maintenance to get the survey work in line, it, it makes things difficult. We're not as efficient in that operation, so our goal is to add a fifth member. So we have someone full-time doing that supervision and training. We have a staff member that has been surveying the city back in ITT days that we were fortunate enough to have here at the city. He'll be with us for a couple more years, but we were trying to get all our staff trained up, deal with that succession planning, have that person out there, being able to train up all our staff and be able to fill in. So we always have two two-man crews in operation at all times who are most efficient. That saves us from being able to bring some survey work in-house, so we're not hiring consultants. It's, you know, it's kind of an offset. We can do more work, so we're paying out less money. A new resiliency compliance manager position. Excuse me. That position is to address, one, our MS4 permitting. As we become more further along in that MS4 permit, there's more and more requirements. As we know, there's, there's more and more grants dealing with resiliency out there. This person's going to help go after those grants, help manage that MS4 permit requirements and, and deal with those ongoing program elements to keep things running smoothly. You know, we could contract some of this out with a consultant, but it's another one of those things, it's going to be, it's a cost requirement for the city mandate that we have to do and incur. Having that person in-house makes, makes the most sense. As we move into stormwater management maintenance, we do have an increase in this fund as well. We have some additional personnel changes. We have an assistant stormwater maintenance manager. We currently have a manager now over all the maintenance staff. It's, the majority of our staff are in maintenance in, in this department, and having one person oversee all those staff members is, is difficult. And I know, because we've been enhancing, we've been adding staff members over the years, having this backup person to assist, one in training, the oversight of the equipment fleet as well, and just being a backup to that person is, is essential as well as, you know, that succession planning in depth, you know, trying to be prepared. You know, if we lose this person, how are we going to function and operate? Who's going to know the system, you know, as well? The two new equipment operators, that is kind of an offset. We, in the past, had prison crews from the state, and the state has changed their program. They used to provide a deputy, and we would pay them for their deputy. So the, the new system that is in place that will be, we're gearing to start up is, they do not provide the deputy anymore. So we have to provide two staff members to oversee the, the prison crew members. Our staff has gone through some training, but that cost, it's really a cost offset. So rather than pay the deputy, we're paying to have a staff member on, on site. So it's really, we're adding positions, but we're really not adding to the budget.
Hey Carl, can I just interrupt you?
Yes.
So when we had deputies before, they were armed, I assume, and, and, and they're law enforcement. Are we going to have armed people that we hire to supervise these prisoners?
No, no, they, they will not be armed and I.
I mean, I guess I'm asking.
Were they armed?
We send our biggest guys, though, right?
Yeah, biggest guys. I mean, I, I guess I'm, what I'm asking is, I, I assume these prisoners are, are pretty much, you know, approved for this type of work and they're considered low-risk, but do we face any liabilities from this?
So I looked at this agreement, it came up previously, and we looked at the liability, we talked to our insurance carrier, we talked about the change.
They weren't.
And this is the stated agreement that all jurisdictions enter into now when they are employing any prisoners that are from the state. I think it's, is this.
It's still the state.
Yeah, it's through the state.
And they were not armed before, and, and our interaction with them is this is a longstanding program they've had, and they've never had any issues. And the, and the staff, the prisoners that they are ones that are getting near to being released or ones that don't have major infractions. So it's not something that is typical where there's any concern or issue that's ever arisen from, from this program.
Let me just add to that, and I'm going to call on the city manager for a minute. So some of this conversation started in our trip to Tallahassee. This, was it this past January where we met with the Department of Corrections? Can you just hit the highlights on that?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Yes, staff did meet directly with leadership, with the Department of Corrections, and we went over essentially your, your key points, Councilmember, and safety is always at the forefront of anything we do. And this is an activity that we have felt comfortable with in the past, again, a very longstanding program. But also, we're not taking a backseat to possibility and have been working with our Flagler County Sheriff's Office liaison to have a relationship out in the field as well as we're operating and making sure that there's an awareness factor. So this isn't just a contract, it's a, a program.
I just want to make sure the public can feel safe about this.
And also, a little push on the, on the sheriff's side to keep an oversight, you know, while it's going on. I think now you've got the two layers, so, so good. Good question. Good, okay.
So you can see, there's, there's some increase in operating expenditures. Obviously, you know, we, we see that across the board in other departments with materials and whatnot that are associated with our maintenance activities such as pipe and sod and those sorts of things, and then some capital outlay items that are tied to some of the work that we perform. Then our stormwater management operations, there's one new position, stormwater asset supervisor. We're, we're looking to, you know, get better in managing our infrastructure and our assets. We're, you know, in terms of inspection, programming needs and replacement components and identifying what all those assets are so we can, one, keep the public informed of what we have, where we are, what we're doing, and when we need to do it. So that, that is a new position that's added. It was, you know, thought about in, in the enhancement program, the last rate study that we had. So we've been trying to do this with a, a non-dedicated position, but it's really a full-time position that is, is a need for this type of work. And then, non-departmental, are all the allocations and, and other items associated with the functions of this department.
Carl, just describe the contingency line for me, please.
That, I'll pass on to Gwen. I believe that is our, mostly our loan that we got this year that's going to be transferred into next year, but maybe, is that correct?
Good morning.
Good morning, Helena, thank you.
Finance director. Yes, that is unspent loan proceeds from the loan that we took out in March for those capital projects. So it just goes into contingency and then it gets used as revenue the following year.
So it's just, it's a, it's a placeholder for it for the time being, and that was the low-interest loan that, that we were able to take advantage of, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, we, I believe it was an eight-million-dollar loan, and we did some pipelining projects. We have one project underway now on Belt Air, and then we have one project out to bid and another one ready to go out to bid, and then a, a fourth one also currently on the street. So we expect a lot of construction activity next year to use, utilize those loan dollars. And we'll get into the five-year plan. The top goes through those, those revenue sources that we mentioned at the very beginning of the presentation. As we work our way down, you see the summary of expenses. Operating expenses is obviously the largest line item in terms of maintenance, maintaining our system. The saltwater canal, that is associated with our, our pipes through the seawalls that we're replacing or repairing, and then installing seawalls at some of our canal end lots where there is no seawall, we're, we slowly progress and, and take care of adding those in. Stormwater storage detention, that is a project up in the north end of the city. London Waterway Expansion, that is one where we have the, the Caris Act funding, or the rescue fund, sorry, that is going to help fund some of that. We do have a, a grant we got from the water management district and a potential grant we're looking to get also from Florida Fish and Wildlife for some of the landscaping around that stormwater pond. Control structure replacements, weers, we have, that's definitely tied to our, most of it's tied to our loan with L4, and we have P1 that we're looking to advertise. Major pipe and canal crossings, that is tied a lot to our stormwater pipelining and replacement program. You can see as we, in '23, we're using up our last loan, and that was the last loan tied to the rate study. So you can see in future years and in all these line items, you know, a lot of those numbers drop off, one, because there's no new loan to be taken because the rate won't handle an additional loan. So we'll get back more into our maintenance and reactionary measure to pipe replacement programs. So that's what really triggered doing a rate study this year to analyze where are we and what should that rate be to continue so we stay ahead of our infrastructure needs. So that, we're in the, just kicking that off now with the consultant, so we will come back to with a lot more information with, with where we stand. As we scroll down, capacity improvements, pipe replacements, are, are just our ongoing program, replacing pipes across the city, swell maintenance, rehab and renewal. This is for our current two-man crew. You know, as part of the rate study, you know, we heard from council to look at what's the cost if we wanted to add two additional crews. So we are having the rate consultant price that separately so we can bring that number back to you. Our ditch maintenance rehab and renewal, this is, you know, the program we started up as part of the enhanced program. We didn't have one prior, you know, years ago. We added a crew that made a big difference, you know, cleaning up those ditches. A lot of those have never been touched. We do try and get the prisoners in the ditches to cut down the grass, you know, they'll limit it on what equipment they're able to operate and utilize and what work they can perform, but this gets us into those ditches to help open them up. Are we control? We're in our last year of our contract. We know with the cost of chemical rising, we did bump those costs up in future years. That is a costly endeavor. We try and obviously look at alternatives to chemical treatment, weed harvesting, some of the, the carp, we worked with, you know, University of Florida on some alternate treatment items. So that, that's an ongoing effort. We continue to try new systems and try and be environmentally sensitive. And then we have some new equipment needs planned, and some of those are replacements, some of those are new items. And I believe that, that ends the presentation on stormwater.
Councilman, questions?
Nope, I, I just would like to say great work, and I think that this upcoming rate study is going to put us in a good position to be able to stay ahead of our future growth. So thank you.
And so the projected completion date of the study is?
I, we're looking to finish up probably late summer.
This summer?
This summer timeframe. That, that's their target date right now.
Okay, good, very good. So we'll have the, the data available to work with, you know, this year. Excellent, thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Carl. Director Jason DeLorenzo will now present the building.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Jason DeLorenzo, Chief Development Officer. The building division continues to be extremely busy. Last month in June, we processed 1,721 permits, building permits. That was actually the highest number we've had for, for this year so far. The last four months have been exceptionally busy. We're averaging 1,663 permits per month of process. As you can see, we have, are requesting another building inspector to manage all of the inspections that come along with all those permits. I, I'm happy to tell you that we made an offer for our last open position. We're getting ready to bring on that person. So we will be fully staffed for the first time under my tenure, which I'm very happy to announce to you. And we have had a very good success in hiring of the last year or so, and we've had excellent retention as well. So we haven't had to replace folks either, so we're very excited about that. The, the budget itself, you can see, has an increase of 9.4% over last year. The primary reason is for our additional person, plus we have three trucks, which are approximately $120,000 in this budget as well. I want to point out the reduction in operating expenses that we're anticipating. That is directly due to our being able to be fully funded. We are, we have not needed to use a private provider this year at all, which is a cost savings over last fiscal year of over $300,000. So that reflect, is reflected there. There's something I need to point out. We, you may see the line item there for fund balance appropriation. Next, your next agenda, we are going to request a reduction in building permit fees because of our volume. Our fees are, we are collecting more revenue than, than we need to spend to complete the, the work. And so you're, you're, this is reflected here as we look forward to managing our fund balance for next fiscal year. But we're going to be bringing a, a resolution next week to you and ask for that reduction that will actually start this fiscal year and continue through next fiscal year. To manage that loss and reduction, we'll be using our fund balance, which is nearing 2.8 million, I think. So we'll be, we'll be working that down to an acceptable rate, and we will tell you more about that in next week, and I will answer any questions you might have about this budget.
So we'll hold off, and you'll tell us how much you're going to reduce that, that permit fund balance by, until you make your presentation?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other collections of, of permit-type fees that are being looked at as well? So you've got the building permits. Are there any other fee collections that we collect from builders or any of those folks?
When we completed the fee study.
Yeah.
Last year, Stormwater completed one as, as well, but theirs will not be changing as, as far as I know.
What I'm really asking, and I guess I'll, I'll ask the question today so we're ready to address it at the next meeting, is there any other, and I'll use a very non-accounting term, stagnant money that's sitting in a pot that we have collected in case we needed it because of the forecast growth? So the building permit fees is an example of that, where we did our best to forecast it, but it got overforecasted. We've got a ton of money in there, which is statutorily unnecessary. Are there any other types like that, maybe to lesser magnitudes? Or is this the sole, the sole contender?
Not related to building permit fees or, you know, or fees, now that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Yeah. Not, not related to this.
I just want to make sure we don't overlook something and have to address it again later.
Yeah. Not related to permitting and new construction. How's that?
Okay. Thank you.
Is that acceptable?
Gentlemen, question?
I do on that, but I'll save it for next week. I just have one other question. How many inspectors do we currently have for building?
Eleven, and I think the, the new hire would be the twelfth.
Wow. And they, they've done, the eleven did 65,000.
Yes, we are averaging, it's between 30 and 40 inspections per day, per inspector.
It's mind-boggling.
These guys are busy.
Yeah. Yes, they're out before we get here in the morning, and they're, they're in late.
Wow.
Yeah. And this, really to, it's, it would be better for the community if we had more inspectors that would be able to reduce the volume, spend more time, you know, make sure we're, we're enforcing the building code as anticipated.
So, and, and it improves safety.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, and quality of, of construction for, for everybody. So everybody's good with that.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to say congrats on being fully staffed, and I know outsourcing some of our permitting processes wasn't ideal and bringing them back in-house underneath your department is great, and I'd love to hear that. So congrats.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, hopefully, we're becoming a destination for the building trade to send their best workers to Palm Coast to take up full-time employment here for the future.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Jason. Okay. Next is the Information Technology Fund, an enterprise fund that is funded by revenue from fiber and broadband services with municipal partners such as the Flagler County Schools and cell tower revenues. The increase in revenue this year comes from annual contractual escalators, revenue from two new towers approved by council, as well as 200,000 inappropriate fund balance. The only major change from the current year's budget is 200,000 inappropriate fund balance to be used for consulting services to assist us in inventorying and documenting all the fiber and assets related to the city's network. This documentation is critical, not only for the daily operation of the network, but also for planning for the necessary future maintenance. So as you can see, it's increased.
So I'll defer to my fellow councilmember. Is that inventory a part of the security and hardening of the system? I mean, is that obviously an integral part of that?
For sure. Definitely a, accompanied with resiliency. And in a tangential note, I've also seen a ton of MetroNet trucks driving around out there. So that's pretty exciting to see, and it's important, if they're piggybacking on top of our network, to know where all that infrastructure is.
I do have a question, which might be better held for when Doug is available. I do get complaints from time to time about growth versus cellphone connectivity. Now, I know that is not exactly what those budget line items were all about, but is there a tension in your budget for that category?
Okay, so.
And we may want to hold the question.
That is really.
It's a very technical question. So let me just put it out there for, for follow-up, okay?
Absolutely. So we'll come back to council on the 30th to discuss all budgets again. We'll go over every budget. So he'll be here, and I'll make sure that he has your question.
Thank you.
Okay. In closing, we want to remind the public that access to this presentation, as well as the budget worksheets and previous presentations, are available by, on the website in the budget preparation tile. And as a reminder, we will be back Tuesday, August 9th, to review the cap, the internal services, special revenue, capital, and all remaining fund budgets. So that ends our presentation.
Any additional questions at this time from city council members?
I've got.
Very good. Then I will open up the, the meeting now to the public for any public comment for items that were not previously covered in the agenda today. Any members of the public wish to come forward and make comment to city council at this time? Seeing no one approach, I will close public comment. And discussion by city council, again, I just have to, I have to thank your group because I remind everybody once again, you are not just working on the budget you're presenting today, you are juggling the prior budget and the budget that backs this one up in the future. So there are always three balls being juggled at any one time. So kudos to being able to answer our questions at such a level of detail. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, any final comments today?
Nope.
Very good. City attorney?
I have nothing.
Very good. And city manager?
I have none.
Very good. Well, with that, then I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
A second? Okay, then we are adjourned.